Yo, what's up? What's going on everybody? It's Super Dave. Coming back at you again with another episode on the PA Political Revolution Podcast. And finally, I have a good, a good guest today, man. It's, it's, it's the young Taylor Getwood, newest school board member we have. And, and brother, can you go ahead and tell everybody that there's been living under a rock? A little bit something about you, brother. Who are you and what do you do for the school board?
Alrighty. Hello, hello. Greetings to you all. My name is Taylor Getwood. I am your newly elected Port Arthur ISD School Board trustee. I am nineteen years of age as of now. My birthday was just on July twenty-second, so I haven't been nineteen too, too long. But um, I have been um, very, very, very um, active in my community, um, in my church, in my schools. Um, for as long as I can remember, I've served on um, um, served in many capacities, um, leadership positions through the council, um, superintendent advisory board, anything you name it. Um, I've worked alongside with them several different Ivy League organizations, the Port Arthur God Right Capital League chapter, um, let's see, and a plethora of other organizations. So saying all this to say, I have been very involved on those strings to support out the community. Um, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Taylor Getwood, and I'm always willing to partner up and work with those who are coming from a good place, a good heart, with good intentions to um, help our community continue to thrive, to see higher heights.
Okay, good. That's great. That's great. That's great, brother. That's great. Now, now tell me something. What, what, how does a young brother like yourself want to get in? You say you're eighteen, right?
Yes, sir.
And, and how actually do you get into the local uh, politics specifically with the school board? Tell us about that journey for yourself.
Well, I had been um, an advocate on behalf of Port Arthur ISD, like I said, for as long as I can remember, serving in the capacities of um, school boards, I mean, um, on the superintendent advisory boards. I've worked alongside them, um, and I got a kind of a taste of what they do, um, and stuff of that nature. I worked with them when we, when they did a few of the policies on behalf of the superintendent advisory board and stuff like that. But when it came down to the school board, it was kind of like second nature, because like I said, I had been in the school system for the past thirteen years, twelve years of my life. So it was really just wanted to get involved so I can help my um, community and help my school district thrive to see higher heights. Because I already knew as a student, looking from the outside in, I can kind of pretty much generate and help bring an asset and a perspective that no one else has ever brought to the school board before, which is the student perspective, and bring that perspective of what's actually going on in our school system. And not just what's on paper, but what's actually happening um, in the schools. And so I thought to myself that, hey, with that perspective and with their knowledge and with their experience, we can take Port Arthur ISD and make it the best school district in the city of, in the, in the state of Texas.
Okay. And on your perspective, is, is there anything in specific that you wanted to um, to harp on? Like say, for instance, some people are here, want to focus on test scores. Some people say, I probably want to focus on curriculum or student side, you know, student size, student class size, or something of that nature, or it could be even something completely different. Is there something that you specifically wanted to um, to tackle at uh, PISD or try to get, you know, some, some attention to or to get, you know, get, get some?
It wasn't, um, it really wasn't like anything in particular, because there was so much that I, that I felt needed, you know, to be talked about. You know, just as you said, with the curriculum, the way we learn nowadays, upgrading the technology, working with um, the people that we have put in place to find upgraded technology to help get our students more involved, you know, we are in Port Arthur ISD, we are a fairly large district where, you know, we're not as large as HISD, and I have friends who um, attended some of those schools, and they would tell me some of the technology and stuff that they would use, and some of the things that helped advance them and make their um, district more advanced to help with test scores and stuff of that nature. But it was um, really a plethora of things such as test scores, such as the way we learn, the way we handle things, and the way we conduct ourselves um, as a district that really want, that really pushed me um, to go ahead and say, you know what? Enough is enough. Let's go ahead and add this change factor in there. Maybe if I can give this perspective, maybe if I can give a relevant perspective of what's going on, then we can work together as a team to help take it to where it needs to be.
Okay, okay. Great, great, great. That's good to hear. That's good to hear. Now, now going through your um, campaign, right? Did you get any type of backlash from being a, a, a young person in there? Did anybody think you was too young? Well, now tell me about some of those trials and tribulations in which you had to deal with, dealing with that.
Oh, yes, sir. I, I would say, um, how, how would I put that? I used to have a word that I would call it, kind of like my, my, my battle scars, basically. Um, of course, you know, with me being eighteen years old, um, and being the first eighteen-year-old to run for a position here in the city of Port Arthur, I did receive a lot um, of, I wouldn't say backlash, but I would say a lot of questions.
Please, please give us some examples. I mean, if you can give us some, you don't have to give us the names, but if you could, if you could give us some examples, man, we would pretty begraciate or just some things that people said.
And I mean, it was, it was simple things, you like, such as, oh, he's too young, or um, how does he know that he's ready for the school board? Or he's, he's too young. What can he tell us? He just graduated. But those were just some of the things that I heard. I, like I said, I didn't really hear any, anything too major, at least I didn't hear of. But that was the, I think, concerns of the um, citizens of Port Arthur. You know, hey, he's too young. How is he gonna balance this with school? What's, what's this on the third end? Of course, me being um, who I am, you know, I had no problem answering those questions. I mean, for me, and this is just me looking from the outside in, from my perspective, I didn't feel as though I was too young. I felt as though I was the perfect age. I felt as though that it's something that the school board needed, because it's something that they never had before. I just graduated, which means I can tell you everything that's going on in the school system. Um, from a school board perspective and from um, any administration perspective, they don't really deal with the, the school system on a day-to-day basis, if you get what I'm saying. They, they're not the, the day-to-day operation. They govern um, from a um, a governing body perspective.
Okay, who, okay, who actually does it? Who, who, who doesn't deal with the school board on a day-to-day uh, basis?
Um, like administration. This is what I'm like, I'm getting referenced to, just like administrative position.
Okay, administrative positions inside the school, inside like the, it's minister, when you say administration, is it like, like in the high school?
I'll give you an example. Yeah, go ahead. So let's say that I am a school teacher, correct?
Right.
So if I'm a school teacher, I have the same students every single day, every single day of school.
Right.
However, if I am a supervisor, I'm not gonna be with the students every single day. You know, I'll, I'll see them whenever, you know, whatever teacher time is. So I was giving reference to that. So, you know, when you're on a school board, school board members, we don't deal with the day-to-day operation. That's why we um, have our superintendents, that's why we have the administrative roles, and that's why we have the teachers, you know, and, and the district employees. So I was able to bring, in my mind, I'm able to bring that perspective of the day-to-day operation, because I had just been in it. You know, I just graduated. Like I said, I was in there in the school system, Port Arthur ISD, for twelve, thirteen years of my life.
Oh, okay.
So that, that's what I was able to bring to the table um, in my mind. So, you know, when people were questioning, well, hey, he's eighteen. What can he tell me about the school board? What can he tell me about Port Arthur ISD? Well, I just graduated. I can tell you everything you need to know from the student and the teacher perspective and the day-to-day perspective. Um, so I really did, I really didn't um, face any, you know, once I, once we made that um, clear of what I was bringing to the table, I really didn't have any um, you know, any questions. The next question was just, hey, how are you gonna, you know, do school and how, how do you feel about running? You know, what pushed you to run? And as I said, what pushed me to run was I saw it was a position, it was a time for a change, it was an open position, that was three seats that were open. And I said, you know what? Let me go ahead and let's see if the city of Port Arthur is ready to take Port Arthur to a, to a new height and a new level. And as I said, I've worked with all these people before um, as a student leader, so I didn't foresee me having to, you know, have too many problems when it came down to working with them as a team to get things done.
Oh, okay. So let me go ahead and get this straight. So basically, what you're saying is that, that from being a student, you know that a lot of the administration, board members and higher-ups don't necessarily understand the day-to-day operation of a student, how a student feels, going to different classes, dealing with different teachers, their interaction. And since you've graduated, you, when you running, when you're being on a board member, you want to bring that element to the actual board members and kind of show your experience off in that? Is that kind of what I'm getting at?
Yes, sir. That's, that's, that's kind of what, what you're saying. So yeah, that's what I wanted to bring, you know? Because when, when we have that, when you have that perspective of the day-to-day, on top of the perspective and the experience that other board members have by being on the school board, then you can pretty much cover all of the bases. That way, everybody, and, and like I said, when I was running my campaign, I wanted, I wanted every decision to be thought about from every single angle, as it should, as it was, but with me, I'm able to give you more detail.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Right, right. Okay. Yeah, I can, I can agree with that. I can, yeah, I can dig it. I can dig it. And, 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 and tell us um, uh, the nickname that a lot of people like to call you. You know, I kind of heard a couple of different things on this. What, what's your nickname that a lot of people call you?
The Prince of Port Arthur. Yes, sir.
The Prince of Port Arthur. Hey, so tell me, tell me about some of the, uh, what you've been hearing good and positive on calling yourself the Prince of Port Arthur?
Well, that's actually a name. Um, I did not gift that name myself. I did not just wake up one morning and say, oh, Taylor Getwood, you're the Prince of Port Arthur. I actually received that name when I was in um, ninth grade, due to all of the community activities that I would do in the community. And I received it when I went to a um, to a conference one time. It was a student leadership conference, and it was with all of the student council presidents from all over Port Arthur, um, Port Arthur, Beaumont, and others. We had a big leadership conference in Houston. And so um, my campaign slogan um, was, it, it dealt with like royalty in, in a way, in, in the sense of fact, um, you know, saying like stating that we are all kings and queens. And so when we um, talked about our different campaign slogans, we came up, they came up with the Prince of Port Arthur. And then I didn't start utilizing that um, title until, I wouldn't say my eleventh grade year, when I started doing more in the community, and a few of the community citizens, they were saying, oh, you just like the Prince of Port Arthur? I was like, oh, that's what they used to call me. So the name just stuck. I think it's a really great name. I like it. It's really, really catchy. And I think it fits um, exactly what I have done, um, and all the work that I've, you know, put in, 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 in our city.
Right, right, right. That's good. That's good.
And of course, you know, you, you have those who, who understand, and you have those who don't understand. You have those who question, well, why he call himself? But I, just to make that clear, y'all, I did not just say I'm the Prince of Port Arthur. It was a name and a title that was gifted to me, and I do not take it lightly. I wear it with pride. I love it, and I make sure that I utilize it to the best of my ability.
That's good. That's good. Right, right. Now, I'm gonna get a jig. Like, right when I first heard, I was kind of, well, the Prince of Port Arthur, what? How is a, a public official that's a servant going to call himself a prince, you know, and a prince don't actually serve? But I had to kind of change my, you know, thought process on that, because you know, you're a younger, you're a younger guy, right? Now, now, I guarantee you, if the mayor would have called himself the King of Port Arthur, I would have been jumping on his neck. Everybody would have been jumping on him, you know, though ear fans would bust on him, because you know some of the history he has, but...
I, I do understand that, but I mean, like I said, that was, that was a title that was, that was given to me way before office. I think people started paying attention to it once I, you know, once I was in office, because I mean, that's not the name that I utilized when I was on, on my ballot. I use my, you know, of course, my direct name, a full name. But yeah, I was, I was called that way before I even put my name in the half of the school board. It just, I guess it really became um, uh, an attention, you know, it really caught everyone's attention once I, um, I did run for office.
And, and then again, like I had to say, right, right. Then again, that, like, just like I had to say, I had to kind of change my thoughts on that, because you know, you're a younger guy, you know, you're, you're more fresh or whatnot, you're more into some of the new, you know, things.
Exactly what you just said as well, you know, that, exactly what you just said is exactly another reason why, you know, I wanted to, to run for office in Port Arthur, because I wanted to bring some, a breath, a breath of fresh air. I knew that, you know, running for school board would be the perfect place for me, because I mean, city council, I don't, I have little, you know, I have enough knowledge, but I don't have too much knowledge to be in a city's position as of yet, because I'm eighteen, I'm still learning, you know, different things like that. But the school board, the school district is, is, I, I literally, that's like the back of my hand, literally, because of all that I've, you know, dealt with in the school system, all that, the position that I've held. And it's kind of like, like I said, I'm very spiritual, and I do attribute all my success and all my achievements and everything that I've accomplished to God. And so I really believe that God has really set me up, um, and put me into a position, into a place to where I could have ran for this position. I could even give a thought, because I guarantee you, had I not been involved in school, had I not been involved with PTA, had I not been involved with um, as many organizations as I would have been, I wouldn't have even thought about even running for any office, let alone the school board. And I think that's another thing that, um, because people don't really know that about me, but I was, I was involved in so much. I was even on the PTA. I was PTA Vice President, First Vice President, um, and I was also the first student to ever serve in the capacity of leadership in PTA um, as well. And while I was on PTA, it wasn't as though I just, you know, ran just themselves on PTA. While on PTA, I also put the work in there as well. And I'm proud to say that we made history at the ninth grade campus, um, when I was the Vice President. Me, Dr. Eddie, and Ms. Washington, um, Ms. Jermaine, Eddie, and Ms. Washington, we all came together and we actually made, set a record. We had the most parents to sign up and participate um, in PTA for that actual school year. And we received awards and um, different things of that nature. But, and I also attribute that to my family. As many, as many people know, I was raised by my grandfather and my, my grandparents and my great-grandmother. So I also had a different perspective growing up. I had that old school training, not the, not the training that most of my peers and classmates had. So it kind of helped me to stand out, and it also helped me when it came down to understanding and um, making decisions in certain situations. So um, yeah, I was, I, I've done a lot before I, I ran for school board. It wasn't like I just got up one morning and said, you know what? This is what I want to do.
Okay, good, good. Um, and then I'm, I'm glad you said family, right? Because you, because you must be on the same wavelength that I'm at, right? That's the next question I was gonna call you, right? Coming from a um, a legendary name like Getwood, right? Do you think that you've been groomed to, to be in the position that you're at in um, in the school district? Or do you think that being a Getwood actually helped to hurt you on your um, on your plight to be in the school board member? And you know, and just in general, helped doing just the things that you've been doing within the school district?
I think for um, being a Getwood, it's, it's something. You know, we live, we live in Port Arthur, Texas. Port Arthur is already small, so um, you know, everybody knows everybody. Um, like you said, it is a legendary name in Port Arthur. So it does come with both good, also, it also comes with some other things as well. But um, I would say that yes, they most definitely, my, my parents, my family, most definitely helped in grooming me to become not just a school board member, but grew me to become a leader, which then allowed me to explore more, which allowed me to grow more. Now, assuming these different positions than a few of the positions I've been in. Hello?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'm right here, right here.
Okay. So um, so yeah, I most definitely would say that my family and my support system did play a, a very huge part in me becoming the leader that I am today. Um, as we all know, you know, whenever you associate, whenever you have a last name, such as such, of course, you're gonna get those people who love you, you're gonna get those people who don't really like you. But it's not, that's not the main goal or the main point at hand. My, I was always grown, I was always taught growing up to have integrity, to do what is right when no one's looking, and to do what is right for the better cause of the mass of people, not just for those of whom you like or you support, but do what is right for the majority of people, to do what is right for everybody that you can possibly think of, because you can't please everybody. But if you make the right decision, I grew up learning this saying, be happy, be healthy, but make sure that you make the right choice and the right decision, and you should be able to live with yourself.
Okay, good. Good, 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 good. And another corner question I want to ask, um, how do you think have you been treating the media? Because like, I, I, I remember like, every time in the newspaper, they hear something about the school district, they showed Taylor Getwood. I mean, you was in the news like every other week, it seemed like. And if anything about the school district, you like, you had, it was your picture up in there. How do you think that the media, uh, do you think the media helped you? Or what, what do you think that led the media to attract you, to, you know, to choose you for a lot of different photos and different, you know, rep, being like a representative of the school?
Um, like I said, with me being um, in those positions that I held in school, student council president, superintendent advisory board president, principal advisory board president, I was always, you know, I was gonna be there. I think the media um, most likely chose me. And I, you know, I, I did have a few other classmates who would be in the newspapers, but you know, it was a majority of me, um, because of mostly what I was doing in the schools, what we had going on with the programs and stuff. Like I said, I was really involved in so much, so it would really be impossible for me not to be there when, when things were going on. But I do think that the media um, definitely helped um, a lot. But, and then again, it wasn't as though I was, you know, I already had this on my mind. Me running for school board was something that I really had planned to do later on in life, once I, you know, graduated, once I was up in age and I wanted to come back to Port Arthur and kind of settle down. That was what the original plan was. I always wanted to become um, a school board member and elected official in my city. However, uh, one conversation with God changed all of that, and I followed his voice, and now we are here. But I would definitely say the media did help. Now, I can't say as to why. I was always on the front page, but I guarantee you, it had nothing to do with politics. It was simply the work that I was putting in and the work that I was doing. And whatever story they covered, obviously, I guess I was working on that project as well.
Right, right. Okay, okay. Now...
And I was honored. I mean, I, I was even honored to even just be featured in um, you know, as many as, as, as there, there were. I was just like, you know, hey, thank y'all, you know? And it was even times to where my classmates, you know, we would even all get together, and we would discuss some of the things, and we would talk about things like that. And I would always, you know, push, and you can even speak for most of them. I would always push my classmates to do the same exact thing as well, and I would always give them their praises when they, when, when they did um, amazing things as well.
Right, okay, okay. Now, um, now, now, look, I was looking on your profile, right? Your profile picture, just to get some more information about you, the thing. I, I'm seeing on here that you have, on your thing, you have a talk show host, or whatnot, you know, youth activist, I kind of, you know, I remember that, and actor, singer. Can you kind of tell us a little bit about, listen, I'm missing something, right? The talk show host, actor, and singer aspects that you have, that you've done, that, that I may have not noticed, and other people?
Yes, sir. So I actually do have a talk show um, that we do. Um, it's really a podcast.
Okay.
Consider it a talk show. We do um, every Saturday um, at eleven o'clock. Um, it's Talk Time with Terry and Tay. I think it's um, a platform that we utilize to showcase um, Hughes, um, to showcase talent, showcase different things going on in Port Arthur, to showcase our Port Arthur, and it's also showcase uh, many things from uh, different perspectives. We just talk, it's called Talk Time for a reason. We talk about everything, nothing is really off the tables when it comes down to um, situations that we talk about. But um, yes, I am a talk show host. Um, I did receive that title as youth activist when we um, when we had the passing of George Floyd.
Yeah, I remember that.
Um, I held um, different community events, um, and all of that kind of spun from um, our um, NAACP chapter. They had um, an event that they did at um, the Pavilion. I don't know if you remember or not. It was um, Let Your Voice. Yes, the Let Your Voice Be Heard Gathering. And then um, that turned into um, a little, yes, you, I, I would say, and, and as they would say in the media, a peaceful um, protest, because no one was violent, nothing happened, but we had a peaceful protest um, right after that. And I was proud to say that myself and a few other of my colleagues, and my best friend, and others um, who were there, we um, kind of put that together after the fact, because the people just weren't tired. The people wanted to do more, and they wanted something to do. So we went ahead and we did that peaceful um, march. And then that led to, I like to call it the three days of success, because each day was successful. And when I say successful, I'm not talking about the um, the, the size of the crowd, but I'm talking about the manner in which we handled it. No one got out of hand. There was no shootings. There was no fighting. There was no killings. There was none of that. Everything was successful peacefully. And so um, all of that um, stemmed, and we had um, the three days of the success, of, of success, as I would call it. We did the march that day. We did a peaceful gathering the next day uh, at the same spot, um, just at the Pope House Pavilion Park at the Jefferson County Sub-Courthouse, where we talked and had a chance to let the um, those who come, those who came out, express their concerns and express their feelings, because it was more than just George Floyd. They wanted, the community and the people wanted to be sure that what happened to George Floyd wouldn't happen here. And so um, they were able to come and talk about that. I also got with a few other elected officials, those who wanted to come. Um, I will say that um, myself and my team that I was working with, because I did not do that by myself, we got in contact with as many um, people, leaders in the community, people who called themselves leaders, or people which of whom held, uh, held positions. We got in contact with them to come out and answer some of these questions, because the people just wanted to know that the people who they put in place, the people who they put in office stood with them and stood for them. And so um, that was the last um, event that we had, and I'm glad to say that was a success for those who did come. Those who didn't, I mean, it is what it is, but the people was able to see, you know, who stood with them, who stood by them. And all they wanted to do was just be heard. All they wanted to do was just voice their concerns and be assured that the people that they put in office was gonna stand for them and with them, just as they said they were gonna do on the campaign trail.
Okay, good, good.
It was from that that I um, received that title as youth activist. They um, featured me in the um, Beaumont Enterprise, featured me in the Port Arthur News, of course, and um, a few magazines. I know the, the Greater Port Arthur Magazine was one, and uh, stuff like that. So it was really um, up from there. That's when everything really started to move really, 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 really fast um, after that.
Okay, great. It's good to hear that. Good to hear that. And another thing, I'm kind of noticed, right? You, you, you have a good media presence on you. You have a good uh, a, a, a good, a good speaking acumen with you, right? A good media voice, you can, you know, talk in the podcast, you know how to interview, you know how to answer interview questions and stuff like that. Where, 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 where did you get some of that public speaking uh, skill from that you have?
You know, and, and saying this as humble as possible, I, most of this comes naturally. Um, you know, I, I really much, um, very much a people's person. I love people. Um, I especially love when I have a platform that I can utilize and show the good things that we're doing. That's one of the things that I really, really, really utilize the most is my Facebook page, because that's where the audience, and I receive the most um, audience from, you know, on Facebook. People share, people, um, they love to see it, because I love my city. I love the city of Port Arthur. And all in all, you know, people have their own opinions about Port Arthur, but I personally like to showcase the good that we do. So I take, I take it upon myself to utilize my platform. Um, and it also, um, my public speaking skills came with practice. Um, of course, I did just come out the womb, you know, speaking like this. And then again, that also came with my support system teaching me these things, exposing me to um, different events, and exposing me to different um, engagements that helped um, helped me and helped mold and shape me into the um, speaker that I guess you could say I am today. But I really started doing public speaking and speaking um, at more engagements when I got in around middle school. Um, and of course, that stems from student leadership, when we had to speak in front of the whole school uh, for, about our campaigns with student council and stuff like that. And then from there, I was invited to speak at different events, because my story um, growing up was very unique. Like I said, I grew up with my grandparents, although I did live with my parents. And so uh, most people saw that story as a triumph story. And so they started util, utilizing me to inspire other kids. And that's when I really started to um, develop who I was as a person, who I am as a speaker. And then I just started utilizing it from there, when I started having classmates come and talk to me about certain things after they heard my story. They were actually telling me their stories. And that also helps, again, with um, me becoming the leader that I am today. Um, you know, listening, following. You have to, before you can lead, you have to follow. Before you follow, you have to be able to listen and take orders and take directions and stuff like that. And so it really stemmed from me being able to tell my story of how it was growing up for me, and listening to my classmates, that I developed a passion to, to be that, to be that leader. Um, because I guarantee you, before I was a leader, I most definitely was a follower, trying to get in with the in-crowd, um, because I had some, you know, insecurities, because I didn't have my mom and my dad with me. I had a grandparent who came to every single, every single event that I had. And you know, that's all great and fine and dandy, and it's amazing to have. But as a child growing up without their parents, you often wonder, you're like, what's going, you know, you do have that, you have that feeling. And I'll never forget the moment that I cherished my grandparents and my great-grandma, and I still cherish them, I will forever cherish them. But the moment that I started to really understand fully what they had done for me was at a Christmas program at Brooklyn T. Washington. I was in the fifth grade, and my best friend, he came up and he asked me, um, before we got on stage, because he was looking for his parents, but his parents didn't show up. But my, my grandparents was there. And so he asked me, he said, why your grandpa, why your grandpa, yo, and your great-grandma, yo, Gigi, why they always come to all your events? Why your mom and your daddy don't show up? You know, where, where they at? And stuff like that. And I didn't really have an answer for them, for him at that time. But that very next week, I had an answer to say, because they loved me so much, because they care for me, and they took it upon themselves to raise me and train me up the way I should go. And it was from that day forward that I, that I, you know, really appreciated them for what they have done for me and my brother, as well as my other siblings as well. And so it was then that I was able to say, you know what? I'm gonna use my story, and I'm gonna motivate my classmates and my peers to start talking about theirs, because we all have a story. But at the end of the day, we are the authors of our own story. And that's one of the things that I preach whenever I'm called to go, you know, to go speak at an event. I always tell the children, no matter what, no matter how old, you are the author of your own story. Because you, just because your parents do something, or just because your situation is this way, or because of where you're from is that way, it does not determine where you will go in life. It's either you're gonna take it, you're gonna use it for motivation, and you're gonna be better. Are you gonna take it? You're gonna be lazy? Are you just gonna be, you're gonna get in that state, and you're gonna say, you know what? I don't think I can. But it all starts with you. And so um, once I developed that passion and that story, then again, it went up from there. I was called to speak at multiple... I was called to speak at multiple events statewide and in different states as well, to come speak at different engagements and stuff like that. So that's kind of where all of that, uh, my passion for public speaking, my passion for people, um, really started.
Okay, that's good, that's good, yeah, I can kind of vouch for that, it's, it's a part, public speaking wise, right, it's a part of determination, it's a part of, um, natural ability and natural desire to it, because, yeah, just like you said, you know, you're a part of your natural, you, you naturally have your own swagger, your own style, on how you wanna, um, communicate and deliver, you know, your message and whatnot, and then, of course, you have to go speak in front of people. And if you wanna, you know, wanna get better at it and, and, and learn like that, you know, for myself, I used to stutter when I was, uh, in high school. High, high school and younger in high school, you know, just stutter, kind of bad sometimes, so, you know, uh, for me, for me, when I went to, um, military, right? I was kind of in a, I was in what, in supply when I was in Marines, right? I was in a, you know, position where I was, um, in a supervised position at a younger, at a lower rank. I was a E-three, but I had like a E-four position, uh, just because they had picked me out of there, you know, just to learn this little, just learn this little, um, warehouse management system, right? So I had different chances to speak in front of different, you know, non-NCOs, different staff NCOs, officers, and even up to the assistant commandant of the Marine Corps came through, especially when he came through, I was talking with different people like two or three times a day, especially, you know, whenever you ready for the, the, uh, the assistant, like the commandant of Marine Corps is kind of equivalent to like, you know, the highest military person over there, kind of like a, a, a colon power to the army or whatnot, he'll be the actual assistant. So everybody want to make sure thing going well over there, you know, I had some bad fumbles or whatnot, and then, but, you know, then again, I kind of came over and kept, you know, speaking about the system right there, so that kind of helped me get over it. Then, you know, after the military, I was into politics, I wanted to learn, you know, really how to speak, you know, and the best, one of the best speakers, I think, of actually politicians, you know, whether it's speaking something truthful, or not, just more of that debate style, and I kind of was learning different things, you know. I remember when I was, um, watching what, you know, I'd watch news agencies like I probably like, or I think friendly like CNN or MSNBC. And I go to more of the hostile news stations like Fox News, would, you know, with the side that I don't really, you know, um, you know, care for, so to speak. So, you know, then I start really looking at race relations or whatnot, and that'll kind of really get you understanding and, you know, study systematic racism, and that kind of was, you know, granting my personality and stuff like that. So that's kind of how I kind of learned on, on, you know, facts on different things, you know, because a lot of, you know, if you, if you can understand racism, in my opinion, you can understand a lot of things, you know, how it affects, you know, how it affects us as a, you know, culture and all, I just go through the whole, the whole military science of racism, so to speak. Not just, you know, the actual slave, but the whole thing, the whole slavery, the Jim Crow, you know, all of that is like a, like a, 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 a weapon, so to speak, you know, then in my opinion, you kind of understand things a lot better, but, yeah, I kind of dig that. Everything what you're saying on that, you gotta have that natural ability to want to learn and have your own style from it.
And then, you know, I, of growing up, I, there was a, a quote, um, that I would often hear that I, that just rings so true to me, even still to this day. You know, it was a quote that said, I've never seen someone practice and not get better. So, you know, and, and it, it's all about how much you do it and how much you practice, that's even when it comes down to sports. You know, if, if you don't know how to shoot, shoot, um, a perfect three, or you don't know how to do it all net, if you keep practicing, then you'll get the hang of it, if you keep practicing, you get the hang of it, and, and not just practice for one whole day and just be done, but continue to practice and be consistent with it. And, and then you'll, then you'll, you know, when you're consistent with it, is that's when you really start developing a passion for it. And when you develop that passion for it, then it just becomes second nature, and it's just like, I want, I could do this all day long, twenty-four hours without having to eat, without having to do any of that, and I remember that's one thing that, um, and that's actually another, another, um, factor of me getting involved in politics. I had a teacher once tell me, uh, we were talking about jobs that we wanted to do. Um, it was, um, I was in eighth grade at Lincoln Middle School, and we had a career, um, tech application class. And we were looking up jobs and different things that we wanted to do, and of course, everybody wants to be NFL players, NBA players, they want to make the millions of dollars. But as that teacher told me, his name was Mr. Rogers, as he told all of us, he said, look here, money is gonna come, but you want to make sure that you do what you love, you want to make sure that you have a job that you don't mind willing to go broke for. You want to make sure you have a job that you don't mind staying extra hours for. And so, you know, I took that and I implemented that within my hobbies, and I, I intimate, I implemented that in things that I love to do. And so that's why I, I'm very passionate about everything that I do, before office, even in office, and even after office. I'm gonna always be passionate about what I do, because I do it from, I do it from a good place, I do it because I love to do it, and I do it because I need to do it. Somebody has to do it, but that's why I publicize Port Arthur so much, that's why I go to these events, that's why I make sure that I'm, I'm visible, because I want the people to see that you have somebody, you have somebody that truly cares from a genuine heart. Not just shaking hands, not just taking pictures for during election time, or to do this, or to get that, but you have someone who genuinely cares.
Yeah, man, yeah, you good, man, you kind of sound like me a little bit, shoot, I, I, a lot of times, when I'm speaking on things, I have a book, a book quote or something, you know, I like to give off, yeah, you sounding real good, yeah, you, you sounding real good, you did a real good job with that public speaking. Cause it's, that's the type of, that's, that's the type of style I like to do. Whenever I'm talking about something, I like to pull out a reference point, a certain book, a certain quote, like, you know, John C. Maxwell, if I'm talking about leadership, uh, Stephen Covey, what the Seven Holiday Habits, you know, even going like to the, uh, Art of War with, uh, Sun Tzu, you know what I'm saying? Or The Prince by Niccolo Machiavelli, you know, just different type of.
Actually, you have to.
Different type of reference point, so, you know, when I'm giving you my opinion or something like that, I'm not just, you know, making it, pulling it out of my behind. I'm trying to give, you know, you a certain reference point to it, so, yeah, 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 you doing good, I like that.
That's what makes a good speaker. You have to know your audience, and if using a reference is what helps you get to, matter of fact, I mean, I, I literally have been doing this all week long, especially when I was speaking to, um, our freshman students, because, you know, I'm a RA, um, here for TSU. So I was speaking to the students while they were moving in, and I was trying to give them basically the breakdown of campus life and everything like that. And my director actually pulled me to the site, he said, you are just simply amazing, he said, because these kids that went to freshman orientation got the same information that you just gave them, however, they didn't take it, you know, like that then, but they actually understood, they took it now. And it's, that's just the type of speaker I am, I like to make connections, because I like my audience, cause I love, I love an interactive audience. I love an audience that's gonna interact with me, but I, I make connections because I want you to understand. Uh, even, even if the connection has to be SpongeBob SquarePants, I want you to understand. And I think that's another thing that makes me different as well, which is another reason why I'm grateful for my grandparents, because I'm able to, to be in, um, you know, any area you put me in, I will be able to, to, to succeed in, because I'm gonna fill it out, and I'm gonna see where I can get in to fit in. Same way, like, you could put me with, uh, with an elderly group, you could put me with, with, uh, you know, an older age group, and I'm gonna be able to, you know, hold, uh, an intelligent conversation there, and still know what I'm talking about, and I can always come back here with my classmates, eighteen-year-olds, nineteen-year-olds, twenty-year-olds, and thirty-year-olds, and still be able to hold an intellectual, an intellectual conversation with, with them as well. And it's funny, because people often tell me, boy, you done been here before, but I do attribute that to be having an old soul because of the environment that I was raised in, and, you know, having the proportions that I had.
Yeah, and then also dealing with college, man, college gives you that other, that a good experience. So e- even Lamar State College Port Arthur gives you the good experience with different people, different ideas, that, that's wanting to go somewhere, at least wanting to do something, at least had a desire to do something, and a learning balance, especially when you're going over to TSU, you dealing over there and with, in, uh, the Houston area. So you dealing with a whole group of, Third Ward, so you dealing with a whole group of people over here, I remember I went to, yeah, sure, it's just right outside the, yeah, it's, the, the apartment's right outside, right across the street.
Right across the street from Big Cooney Homes.
Okay, yeah, and I think they had, well, don't they have like a hundred, a hundred black men, something out there?
Um, yes, sir, we do, I'm actually a part of that organization as well.
Yeah, I remember they had a speaker out there called Tariq Nasheed, there's a guy I kind of, you know, like going to a lot, and I remember he had something out there. Um, I think it was one of them auditoriums or something like that, so I remember went seeing, I remember going to TSU and seeing the apartments right over there.
Look, I'm actually right across the street from him right now, and look, they still on and they still popping, but one thing I can say, and I, I love my Third Ward community, because they are, they are really amazing, you know, people get on the, um, internet, they read these different, and it's funny, I was talking to a parent about this. She was saying, oh my gosh, it's totally different from the reviews I read, they get online and they type up TSU, and they read all these crazy things about, you know, Third Ward, which stuff happens wherever you go, you know, it's just publicized more here in Third Ward, especially around this HBCU that I go to. Everything is a lot more publicized, but, you know, when you get in here, it is, it, it's amazing. I was at the gas station one night, and something had happened across the street, and the gentleman, he came up to me, he said, you okay? And I was like, I'm good, I said, I'm good, I, I didn't even know, you know, anything had happened, and so he said, hey, he said, make sure you take, you know, that way down the street. And he met me back over here, and I had just pulled into my car, and put my car into the garage, and so he was just saying, you know, hey, you know, we, we, we here to make sure our TSU students good. And that's one thing I can vouch for, they are gonna protect, uh, the TSU Tigers, they gonna protect their students, and they gonna make sure that everything is good on all fronts. Because, as I said, I had just came out the gas station, I didn't know anything had transpired or happened, but he, you know, he came, he helped me, and then he even came to make sure that everything was safe over here, just as well as our, um, police department as well. I like to always tease when I go to PV, another campuses, I always tell them, our campus police is better than y'all, because they, they connect with us, they're not just on patrol, they're not just looking for things, but they actually pull over and have to meet, like, you know, have conversations with us, they check on us mentally, because it's a lot. I mean, shoot, I learned, like you just said, that college aspect, it teaches you the, the other aspects of life. I mean, when I got, when I first got here, it was something so small as me going to make groceries by myself, that I had to call my grandpa, I said, Papa, I just love you. I don't know how you did it, because I had so much groceries in that basket, and I paid like two hundred something dollars just off snacks for myself.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It, it, it teaches you that other aspect of life and to cherish, to cherish life and to cherish what you have, because it can be gone in the split second.
Oh, exactly, you, you definitely right about that, and another thing I think here is, right, it being, being, you just a lot of non-black people that's, that's, you know, blowing up what's going on, cause like, the outside community at you is like really family, you know? Most people probably be scared to walk down that side of the road, but most black people really wouldn't be, some may be, but you know, it's, it's nothing that you wouldn't see in Port Arthur, like, here, I'll tell you the truth, I'm looking at my phone, I'm seeing all of this goddamn crime that's going on in PA, but, yeah, I don't really see it out here, you know what I'm saying? You don't see it, but I guess, cause you know, what we be doing, like, yeah, normally I'd be at work, or, you know, we got other stuff going on, usually I'm at work, right? If I'm not at work, I'm over here, you know, trying to work on this podcast, or, you know, playing this Call of Duty game, right? You know, one, one, one of those things, so you don't really see all this, so like, then until it pops up on the news, or robbery at Walgreens over there on three sixty-five, like, what the hell going on? So, you know, this, this, it's just relative, this, this nothing different than your own hometown, but. The main purpose I brought you over here, brother, there's a lot of, there's a lot of rumbling going on, um, the internet or whatnot, and you have a lot of unhappy people over there at the other school, well, parents unhappy at the school district. And basically, I wanted to kind of bring you over here to kind of just talk to you about different types of, you know, policies and stuff like that. What can, um, you know, what, what should parents do in certain type of situations? I'm not gonna be asking about any specific person, or any, or any, you know, specific person, I know a lot of times you can't really talk about school business and whatnot. But it's gonna be pretty much different scenario as far as like with policy, right, y'all have policy online, so, you know, there's nothing that's hidden, there's nothing you shouldn't really, you know, have a problem with asking and stuff like that, but, you know, that's pretty much the main reason we wanted to come out here. Uh, well, I wanted to bring you over here, right? So, um, a lot of, a, a lot of parents have problems, different issues with some of the, uh, teachers, right? What would, what would be like the first thing, what you want to do, like, if I have a problem with a teacher, or a principal, or advisor, or somebody within the, the management of the school district, what would be your advice on how I should handle it? What would probably be the first thing I would have, I should do, so to speak?
And, and of course, um, I am speaking as Taylor Getwood right now. So, um, just to, to let you all know, but the first thing that, uh, that I would advise you to do, uh, as Taylor Getwood, I would advise you to do is to talk to that, that principal, you know, whoever, whatever school it may be, talk to the principal. The principal, um, should be more than, more than happy to speak with you, um, and if you feel as though that you didn't get enough there, then the next, um, level would be to talk to Dr. Porterie, um, and of course, if you feel as though Dr. Porterie, um, you know, or, or your superintendent, whoever it may be, um, did not, you know, if you feel as though you want to talk to someone else, then you can most definitely file, um, the grievance and bring it to, um, the board, or bring it to the school board, whatever it may be, um, I'm just gonna use a different ISD. For example, if we're in HISD and you feel as though a, a teacher is in, um, doing all that he or she may be doing, or whatever situation may be, you'll first contact that principal, because there is a chain of command that you must follow, there is a chain of command. So the first thing, the first step would be talking to that principal, the next step would be talking to, um, that superintendent of that district. The next thing would do, that you can do is to also, um, speak to the board on, on that decision. Uh, and, and now, you know, you have, you're more than welcome to come, because you do have that right, you do have that freedom to speak, um, to, to each and every, um, person on each and every level.
Okay, okay, well, let me go ahead and back up, I should have asked you this before that, but, uh, go, go ahead and go over through, go over with us from our, what, what the mask policy is over there at, uh, PISD, because I remember seeing something on, online that the governor, he doesn't, he's saying that, you know, we shouldn't mandate for school to have a, um, a mask requirement, tell me that the mask requirement Mr. Porterie has been talking about, or the superintendent's been talking about that you have at PISD right now, please. What's the, what's the confusion there, which one is right, is the, is it not a mandate, or is it a mandate at, uh, PISD?
Okay, so to my knowledge, and again, we haven't, you know, we haven't met or anything yet, but to, um, to my knowledge, what's going on right now is, um, Governor Abbott, of course, you know, we had the mandate, um, the, the initial mandate, where we could not, um, we could not enforce masks in school. We could not, uh, mandate, you can only highly, well, um, you know, highly recommend, you could not require. Um, and if you did require, then of course, that would result in a fine, and that was all over the state of Texas for all, um, all, um, businesses or any, any operation that receives, you know, government funds and stuff of that nature. If you are a private, um, private company, private sector, then you did not have to adhere to that, uh, mandate. Um, so to my knowledge, um, what happened was, um, there was a few ISDs who did find a loophole around it. They were able to incorporate it in their, um, dress code or something of that nature, and then they also had some ISDs who were able to file lawsuits against it. So to my knowledge, the mandate was dropped, and, um, PISD was able to, um, incorporate it back within their, um, you know, within the school year. And then again, like I said, we haven't, um, you know, our meeting is this Thursday, so I'm pretty sure that will be a topic of discussion as well. But to my knowledge, that's exactly what that is and, and what happened.
Okay, okay, now, speaking of, uh, dress code, right? That, that the mask be is part of the dress code, just kind of want to bring a bit more to the dress code issue. Say for instance, that, that, um, that, you know, a teacher accuses a student, says, hey, this person is not violating the dress code, but the student and the, uh, parent say, well, you, you probably been mistaken, well, this, you know, this doesn't violate the dress code, right? And if they happen to go to school to try to speak to someone, and the, uh, the principal refuses to speak to that person, how, how should that person kind of fix that issue? Because if they don't speak to them, their student's gonna still be out of the class for that whole day, and they're gonna miss, you know, all of the, uh, the classes and, you know, for that, missing that pretty much that whole day, and may not get credit for it, or, you know, how, how would a, a, a parent should handle that?
Okay, so the, the scenario is, uh, a teacher mistaken, um, a dress code issue, correct?
Right, yeah, say for instance, a teacher says that, hey, this person has spandex, uh, student or parent said, well, this is not actually spandex, because you can look in the tag, that, you know, this is not actually spandex, or it may have a small percent, like two percent spandex, you know? And it's just something that, um, you know, when you're going through, you, you're not actually just, might, you know, have a magnifying glass, looking at stuff, you know, different clothes may look like it's different, and it's something that a teacher probably have gotten wrong, you know? Uh, no harm, no foul, we all get things wrong every, you know, time and then, but how should that happen if a teacher doesn't want to talk to the parent and discuss about that and try to remedy that?
Okay, so, um, in that situation, and then again, I am speaking as Taylor Getwood. Um, and that's, in that situation, I would most definitely love and recommend that, that, for that parent to go ahead and document, document that, um, down, get that documentation, to, um, then again, their next, um, step would be to speak with that principal. And then after that, they would speak to that superintendent, af- after that, they would speak to that school board, but hopefully before it even gets, because there, there are levels to it. They call it level two, level three, level four, um, and I believe the level four is, um, the, um, school board. Um, but hopefully, that situation will be taken care of in-house, it wouldn't even have to get, um, to that, um, to that, to that fourth level. But by all means, if it is not handled at that, you know. to that, to that fourth level. But by all means, if it is not handled at that, you know, in-house or handled at level one, that it needs to be talked about and it needs to be dealt with at, um, a, a higher level. So, I would recommend that, um, that parent, that student, whoever they may be, to get, to document that down, to keep every single thing, because documentation is very much so important, especially when it comes down to, um, following procedures and protocols and stuff like that. So, I would advise that, um, that parent in that situation to just go ahead and document all of that down, um, and just follow the chain of command. And pretty much, you know, anything dealing with schools, anything dealing, especially with, um, with any boards of any types, it has to follow a chain of command. And, um, our chain of command and a majority of the chain of commands, um, is just as follows. You know, your principal, superintendent, then your school board. And then it's also, I wanna make this clear as well, um, because this, this is something that, um, not too many people know. It also varies. The chain of command varies for different, um, different, who, different, um, what's the word that I would like to say?
Institution, schools, grade levels?
Well, for, for lack of better words, for different people.
Okay.
Um, that, that hold different positions. I'll say that. So, a parent, you know, will follow that protocol. Otherwise, uh, an employee of the district, um, would have other procedures to follow. So, there's different procedures for different positions, I should say. Uh, so, you know, if you are an employee, then there's different grievance levels that you could, that you would have to follow.
Right, first a, a parent.
Follow different procedures. And I think that's something that, um, you know, we have to make clear too as well. But, um, for parents and, you know, for anything, because see, I'm the type of person, I, I really, things need to, things, I like, we need to talk about things.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cause if you don't talk about it, then you leave, just like another quote, when you leave, when you don't talk about something, you leave room for assumptions. And when you leave room for assumptions, it just turns into whatever at that point.
Right, right.
If we exact, if we don't handle these situations, if we don't talk about these situations, then you leave room and you leave uncertainty and then you leave, you know, an unclear resolution. And so I would definitely advise that parent to go ahead and follow that chain of command and take it all the way up if you have to. And I understand, you know, we have some people, um, and like I said, some situations are different. It really depends on that person. Some people will say, you know what, oh, well, we ain't gonna do this no more. Oh, oh, it's okay. Oh, well, we ain't, you know, we're gonna take you out or, you know what, I ain't dealing with this. I'm tired of this, we going all the way up. So, I would just advise that parent, whatever decision, um, in that particular scen- scenario, whatever decision you make, make sure that you have the documentation and you keep the documentation.
Okay. And, um, same as like, I wanna speak to, uh, a principal, say I have an issue and I wanna speak to a principal at that time. And, uh, do you have to have an appointment to speak with, uh, the principal?
Okay, so for, for that type of situation, and I'm just being quite honest and, you know, and honest and frank, that I believe is up to, that's at the discretion of that principal.
Right, okay.
Discretion at that principal. From what I, from what I, the knowledge that I have, that is up to the discretion of that principal. Now, you do have some, you know, every, everybody's leadership is different. So, you do have some people who will say, you know what, come on, let's, let's talk about this right now. Or come, um, or you know, like, hold on, I got so much going on. Can you, you know, please do this? So, I would say for that particular, uh, matter that is at the discretion of that principal on that campus.
Okay, I'm glad you said it. And, and I believe that is honest because, because it, it wouldn't make sense, right? To, to say that, yes, you do have to have an appointment because it could be something that's immediate. You could have a, you could be like, hey, I seen somebody with the gun. You know what I mean? And went into school or you heard somebody had like a hit list out. So, that, you, you need to talk to somebody right then and right there. So, I wouldn't have time for no appointment. You to get back to me in two or three days. Heck, the school may be on fire in two or three days. So,
Exactly.
I, I'm glad you answered that with, with, with honesty on that, that it's up to the actual, um, principal to do it. And sometimes they may or may not be the best leader. They may not handle the situation the best. And I'm glad you, I'm glad you answered that with honesty, with not, because, yeah.
And I, I'm telling you, I am very much so an open book. I'm gonna be open and honest with you. If I don't know, if it's a question that I can't answer, I'll say, you know what, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna lie to you. I don't know, let me get back with you. When I can get, you know, when I can get the answers that you need, or, or either I'll say, hey, I, I don't, cause you know, I have had situations in the past when I was a student to where I had classmates who would ask me, or I was put in situations and I would be like, hey, I've never dealt with this before, but this is what I would do. But when it comes down to me having to answer questions, I'm always gonna be open and honest with you because I don't wanna tell you something and then you get there into something totally different. Cause I've had that happen to me before and it wasn't too good, it wasn't too kind. So, I'm gonna always be open and honest. But yeah, I mean, is that something that is also, we, we have to understand. And that's just something that I've come to realize in life in general, you know? Not everybody is the same. We have those who believe different things. We have those who operate the same way. And we can't expect, you know, everybody to operate the same, the same way. But that's why we have these precautions and that's why we have these procedures put in place. So, if you do not feel as though it was handled a certain type of way, that this is what you could do. And again, I will reference back to following that chain of command, just to be on the safe side. Because I, you know, I am still learning. I still have things that I, um, you know, have to, to learn as well. So, just to be on the safe side, that's what I would recommend.
Okay, good, good, good. And, and do you, and I, you know, I'm seeing a lot of people having questions about, well, this is saying like, like, they seem to be a difference in dress code or everybody's not following the same dress code on different, um, different campuses. Or there's a, if there's supposed to be one, uh, unanimous dress code that's followed by the whole district that applies to all campuses? Or does different campuses have different things that fits what they, you know, what different principals wanna do?
And honestly, with that, again, I, I'm gonna be quite honest, that I've actually been looking, um, into that. Um, I've been looking at this, of course, we have our student code of conduct, which addresses that, um, in there. And just going based off what I, if I can recall, I remember seeing that the principal does have a discretion in that input. Um, what I will do, um, just to, you know, on the record, what I will do is I will go back and I will double check, um, to make sure that that is correct. But from what I can recall and what I can remember, the principal does have, um, a, a discretion in that, in that input, um, on their campus. However, um, I do adhere, I can remember, you know, the dress code being the same basically on, on every campus. But then again, that goes back to the different leadership. Some principals may say, hey, this is not acceptable on this campus. Or some people may say, hey, you know, hey, it's, it's okay, you know, we'll allow it or, you know, something of that nature. But I do know that the student handbook, um, that we have, the code of conduct, that adheres to every single school, um, in our district.
Right, right, okay. Okay, good, yeah, I would think.
I will make sure, I, I will make sure that I go back and I double check that. But from what I do recall seeing, I do believe that that's something that I did read, um, in that, in that, um, part of the handbook. But the dress code, you know, has, has been the same since from when I was in school. Of course, you know, they, they've just added to it, you know, cause back then, we didn't have crocs or, or at least we weren't, you know, they weren't as pop- popular and stuff like that and different other things. But again, we are here, we, we are, you know, and now I'm speaking, of course, you know, as Taylor Getwood. If you feel as though that you have a concern, please, 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 please express it. Please express it. Um, you know, we have, we have phones that you can call. I am more than welcome and more than willing to, um, you know, give you my information. It's public information. You can look it up. I will give you, you know, my email address because that's why we are here, to, you know, to hear your concerns and to hear you out. But we don't know, or, or we can't address something that we, you know, we don't know too much about. So, for anyone who, you know, is listening, if you do have a concern or you do have a, have a question on anything, please don't feel, please don't feel so scared or nervous to reach out. I promise you, anybody who has reached out to me, um, over the past few months can tell you, I, I will answer. And I will do the best that I can with what I have in the means that I, that I have, you know, to do things. Because I honestly, and just being open and honest, there's things that you can do and there's things that you can't do. However, I've come to realize and come to find out through my trainings and through learning, it's more can't than can.
Right, right.
And we can, you know, it's only so much that I can do, but I, I guarantee you and I promise you, wholeheartedly, I promise you, I will do all that I can with what I can do. And so all I need, you know, all we need those people to do, if you have a concern, please express them. Because I can't, I can't handle what I don't know.
Right, okay. And a lot of, and, and, and I'm seeing, kind of one thing that I'm seeing, or I've kind of been hearing about a lot, is that you have, um, principals that's either not wanting to listen to the parent or kind of walking off at the, uh, uh, off at the parent. It seems like it's a lot of unfortunate, for whatever reasons, it appears to be a lot of disrespect complaints from teachers to parents. Have you noticed an uptick in that, um, from either side? The teachers may be complaining, like the, the parents are getting more hostile with them? Or the, or the, the parents complaining, hey, the teachers have, just have some disrespect, don't wanna listen to me, I'm a child. Do you kind of, well, have you ever had any, you've heard about it from other board members or you, have you had people complain to you about that recently?
Um, I've, of course, you know, I've, this is nothing new. We have been dealing with this since, who, Jesus? You know, really since I've been in school and I, I'm pretty sure before I was in school.
Okay.
Um, now that, now that I'm on the other side, you know, of things, of course, you know, we do hear about it. If I hear about it, I like to address it. Um, and, and I like to get it, you know, get that, that answer in a reasonable time. And so that, and like I said, that goes to when I am, you know, when someone contacts me. Now, you know, other than that, I haven't really heard of any issues. But that's why whenever I do go to di- different speaking engagements, and that's why I always preach PTA. That's why I preach all these other resources that we need to be utilizing as citizens, that you can utilize as a citizen. Because it takes a partnership. It takes a partnership. It takes a partnership for every single thing that happens. It's a lot of moving parts, but in order for those moving parts to work, it takes a partnership. And then again, like I said, if you have a complaint or have a concern, please, please, please follow that chain of command. Please follow that chain of command. That is the only way that the results that you would like to see are, or even just the, even if the situation is just being hurt, that's the only way that we will be able to actually do something. Um, I, I often talk about that as well when I go places and that's how I encourage people to, you know, to speak out on different things. Because I like to call it talking under the tent.
Okay, so.
If me and you, if me and you, if we're talking about a situation right now and, and we're just talking about it, if we don't bring it or follow that chain of command, then nothing is gonna, you know, nothing is gonna happen or get done.
Okay, so, so let me get this straight. So, you have heard from your time being on the board, so you have had s- s- uh, certain issue, so, yeah, certain situations like that, right? People have came to you about it, is that correct?
Um, about situations similar, nothing, nothing to.
Yeah, something, yeah, something similar where the, where they have an impasse or an argument between a parent and, um, and the, um, a teacher, or a teacher or a principal.
Well, a majority of what I've had was just, just, they needed just clarification purposes. So, you know, I, I haven't had anything to the magnitude of where, you know, somebody just, like, you know, just, something was so drastic to where, you know, oh, this happened, this and the third happened, they led up to something.
Well, basically like something like a teacher doesn't wanna speak to a, a principal or a teacher doesn't wanna speak to a parent. Have you had anything like that? It's not too dramatic, but it's kind of, you know, like disrespectful, you know, you know, it could be interpreted disrespectful. Well, just like a, a teacher or a parent ignores a, I mean, a teacher or a principal ignores a parent. Have you had any of those recently?
I haven't personally had any of those contacts. Not personally, not personally.
Okay, okay.
And that's why I say, you know, please get in contact with somebody.
Right, right.
If, if it's not me, there's several, you know, there's several others. And again, I am speaking as Taylor Getwood. There's sev- there's several others that you can contact.
Right, I wanna. Go ahead.
Yeah.
I apologize, go ahead, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, so please, just, you know, because if I, if, if I have no documentation on it and see my documentation, and, and this is just how, you know, I operate, I like to, and, and, you know, we talked about this as well. I like to contact the source or I, I like when the source contacts me. So, that way I can be able to say, hey, this is what I receive. This is what I receive. And, and as, um, huh, how can I put this? How can I put this? There's, like I said, there's more can't than there's more can.
Right, yeah, right.
So, so saying, saying, saying all that to say, I have to have this, that and the third in order to even mention something, if that makes sense. So, you know, that's why I make myself available, so that person can give me this, that and the third of what I need. And that this, that and the third for me is, of course, the phone call. Secondly, that this, that and the third for me is, of course, the emails, because I'm telling you, when it comes down to this, it's all about documentation.
Right, so, but basically they don't just have to go just to you, they can go to any other board member that they have, right?
Please, please do, because.
I, I, I don't wanna, I just wanna also say, you don't have to just go to Taylor Getwood. Now, we just have him on here because he been courageous enough to come on the bro- the, uh, the podcast and, and not be scared. Can you go ahead and run off some of the names of the other board members so people can understand who they have and, um, who, who is the other board members and who they can also go to?
Well, yes, there are, there are seven board members. And again, I am speaking on behalf of Taylor Getwood and not the school board.
Oh, of course, yes.
Taylor Getwood, there is Diane Brown, there's Joseph Gilery, there's Robert Reed, there's Brandon Barti, there's Deborah Ambrose, and I believe, I'm missing one, I'm missing one, I'm missing one, what's the one? Um, Taylor Getwood, Deborah Ambrose.
Oh, Kenneth Lofton?
And, um, no, sir, no, sir.
No, you don't, you don't.
Yes, sir, Kenneth Lofton, Kenneth Lofton.
Okay, okay, yeah, I, I just looked at it right before I came, talked to you yesterday and I thought, yeah, okay.
You can find those names and also how to get in contact with them on the Port Arthur ISD, um, website.
Right, and, and, and also they have a, um, well, the policy and procedures on the website also too. If everybody need to know that they have a policy and procedures, that's something that you can kind of go by whenever you're trying to get any kind of remedy for any type of problem and to make sure that the school district is going by that policy. So, yeah, I just wanted to go ahead.
All of that, all of that information is most definitely public information and public knowledge. Um, and, and that's also why, you know, why I do what I do whenever I go out and I speak, because I like to inform parents. Because we have a lot of parents who, you know, who might not know that that information is on there, even, even district employees sometimes.
Yeah, yeah, they do, yeah, a lot of them do.
That information is on there. So, it is not, is not any secret to the policies that are put in place or that they have. You can always find it on P A I S D dot org. All you have to do is go to schools, um, or, or one of those, go to About, I believe. And then go down to school board. And it is also there that you'll be able to, to see the goals and priorities of the school board. And everything that you need to know or you would like to know, you can, you can receive that information. And also, you can also request that information as well if you do not see it. If it's something that, that is public, you can most definitely request it. And if it's public knowledge, you most definitely can have it as well.
Right, absolutely. Absol- and, 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 um, and, um, oh, this is my opinion, right? If you happen to have a lot of issues with, with teachers and principals disrespecting, uh, parents or the perceived disrespecting their parents, um, they're gonna have a lot of issues and they're gonna wanna go ahead and go ahead and speak to, uh, the board members, right? The board say, hey, the heck with it. I'm gonna go ahead and speak to the board, the superintendent or whatnot. What's the process on, on parents speaking to the board? Can they come up there and sign up, say, hey, I wanna speak to a board about this particular issue? I know in city council, you can go ahead and speak to a particular issue that you wanna speak to. And I didn't know if that it was the same thing with the board that you could speak to on the issue that you wanna speak to? Or if you can only speak to certain that was on the board, you cannot speak to something that you wanna bring up to the board? Can you kind of give us some information on that?
I most definitely can. And, and that's another thing that, that's a really great question. And it's something that, um, needs to be talked about and needs to be known as well. Um, I can't speak to, you know, as, as to when this changed. And maybe it has always been the same, but I had a different, you know, perspective or I thought it was something else. But however, when it comes down to, um, putting something on the agenda to speak, when it comes down to putting something on the agenda to speak, it's not, um, it's not like city council, you know, to where you go up and you put your names, this and the third, and then you're on the agenda. However, I've come to find out, um, and, and I will make sure that I double back, um, and, and go through the policy that I read to fact check and make sure that I'm, that I'm, you know, stating the correct, um, information. But to my knowledge, how it is set up, you have to, uh, whatever you're speaking on has to be on the agenda.
Okay, so you have to speak to something specifically on the agenda, from your knowledge? And from, you know, what you understand, from your understanding of, you just can't go up there and say, hey, I wanna speak about the issue going on with this here. You know, you have to speak to something that they actually talking about on the council.
Yes, sir, to, to present that to the school board. And, and again, like I said, if, if, you know, there's, there's always other ways, you know, around different situations and around things. But, you know, when it comes down to that, that's what I was, you know, briefed on when I read the, uh, policies for that. Because I have, I did receive, you know, a few complaints about, um, you know, situations of that sort to where someone wanted to come and, you know, just ask a question. Or it was something, um, I forgot the situation that happened, but, um, it all led back to, you know, whatever you're speaking on has to be on the agenda. Uh, uh, for you to, um, speak publicly, um, to the, um, board.
Okay, okay, cool.
My knowledge, and I will go back, like I said, to, to make sure that that information is correct. Um, but to my knowledge, that, that's what's put in place. And then again, and, and also on, on that subject, that, there's, then that's where legal and local policy comes into play. Um, so legal policy is, you know, with the state and everything, local policy is basically what we utilize to adapt it to our, you know, our school district. However, when it comes down to local policy, your local policy. However, when it comes down to local policy, your local policy cannot, cannot defer from the state policy.
Right, yeah, yeah, right.
And not, and, and I can give you a prime example. Let's say that, um, the state of Texas said that all, we want our students to only wear hoodies. So the legal policy will, would be, students can only wear hoodies. Well, the local policy would be, well, Port Arthur ISD or, or other, well, let me, H I S D. H I S D will only wear purple and green hoodies. That's the local policy. But the local policy can't say that, you know, like, oh, it has to be this, this, and the third, or, or, you know, other than hoodies, because then that's gonna, you know, basically defer from what the state policy was. And so that's what I have gathered, um, in my time of learning through my trainings and things of, of that sort that I've had since I've, you know, taken office with legal and local policy.
Okay.
So mo- most of, most of what happens and most of what goes down, you know, isn't, isn't from, you know, the board in particular, any, any board. In, and I'm saying any board, but that's what happens when it comes down to the breakdown of legal and, um, state. And I'm pretty sure it's probably the same for most enti- most other entities as well.
Okay, okay, good, cool, cool. Uh, I wanna digress for a, a little, for a couple of questions. Instead of going off, it's something I was thinking about, I thought I just needed to ask, I wanted to ask. Um, as far as, let me see, as far as like some of the school curriculum, right? When I talk to certain, um, board members, now, and I always ask them, right, why is it that Port Arthur has, well, P I S D has a lower, um, a lower, um, threshold for the curricula, so to speak? Let me put it to you in this way, right? I hear hundreds of, tens of stories, right, about whenever a student leaves P I S D and they go to, um, Port Neptunus Grove, right? That they're completely hit with a whole different type of curriculum. And, and whenever I ask certain board members that, they say that, hey, it's a lot of poverty over here, some of the kids won't be able to pass it. But, but, but what I'm saying is, it would be an injustice to keep the, to keep P I S D on a sort of a retarded curriculum, right? Instead of putting them at the same, making the students compete at the same, uh, level as like a P and G have, right? Because you're giving them the excuse, where you're giving these refineries and other plants and other jobs the excuse to not hire P A people, because we can't actually pass these tests, or, you know, we don't, we're not at the actual curriculum level of saying like a P and G, right? What were your opinions on that, and what would you think? Can we change it? Would you be going for it, or, you know, certain other things to it? What's just your opinion on that, if you have one?
And I'm gonna most definitely be honest with you. Um, I cannot answer that question, um, because then that would, you know, then have me speaking on behalf of the board.
Yeah, you'd be lying.
For, just, just for public knowledge, just for public knowledge, um, no one board member can speak on behalf of the board.
Oh, yeah, yeah, alright.
But I, when I answer this question, I will be speaking from a broad subject, but I will not.
Yeah, it's your opinion. It's, it's, everything I'm asking you is your opinion, it's not taking a position for the board.
Looking, looking from the outside in, um, whatever, whatever entity it is, that entity would have to come together on one accord and determine what is, what is the problem, and then go from there. Once you figure out the problem, then you start implementing solutions, but it has to work as a team. In order for anything to work, it has to work as a team. For example, for example, if me and you have a lemonade shack, and, and, and you make, I squeeze the lemons and you pour the sugar. Well, if I start slacking on squeezing lemons, then you eventually will start, uh, start slacking on, on your sugar. If there's another, another team, another lemonade shack of, across the street from us, and now we're in competition of, of that sort, when that, when, when that team is working together, when they, when they start squeezing lemonade, squeezing the lemons and pouring the sugar together, then they can start doing more things together. Meanwhile, me and you over here, I'm still struggling to squeeze these lemons, which is help, which is preventing you from pouring your sugar to make it the best lemonade. That's what happens. So it takes, it takes, it takes a team, it takes a team, and it takes, it takes leadership to say, hey, this is what it is, this is what's going on, what are we gonna do to move, to move forward? And again, I'm answering the question from a broad perspective. I am not speaking, you know, on behalf of the board. I'm speaking as Taylor Getwood, as a person who is answering the question from a broad perspective.
Oh, right, yes, absolutely, and, and this is your opinion. So your opinion is what it is. Your opinion, you're not stating any fact, you're not stating anything for any board, any organization, this is strictly your opinion, right?
My opinion would be for whatever entity is going through that problem, to work together, to actually listen and find innovative ways around whatever, whatever the situation is. But you must first point out the problem, you must, you must first understand the problem, and then you must first come together with different solutions, and then you implement those solutions and you see which one works. And whichever one works is the one that you go with, and you collectively go with as a team. Everybody supports it, and then from there, you continue to build off of it, and that's, that's how you grow.
Right, cool, cool, and, um, good, and, um, on another, and, and, and you just happen to be reading my mind, brother, you just happen to be reading my mind and kind of have something similar on the, on the podcast workflow or something. You must have a camera over at my house looking at me, or you have one in my head or something like that. Because the next question I want to ask is kind of like on a collaboration, right? Um, I've heard other previous, um, board members say, we need to have a, a collaboration with the city and the school district, the city and the school district who need to have a collaborative effort. But, um, now, this is not, this is not really one of you, I'm pretty much talking about this other guy. I'm just kinda asking your, your opinion on if this would be possible, right? Now, for this other guy, right, for this other previous, uh, board member, when he said we need to have a collaboration. Now, if that was true, during his tenure, he would push something to have the school board, Port Arthur, collaborate with Sabine Pass, uh, school board, right? Now, my thinking on this, right, if you want those test scores to be up there, we have a school district, uh, uh, Sabine Pass that's doing well in a lot of these state tests. Now, I would say, why haven't the school board, I know this is before you, this is not blaming you. Why haven't the school board, heck, at least if they don't wanna go to P and G, you can go right here to Sabine ISD, right? And kind of collaborate with the other board members, some of the school officials, the superintendent, to kind of see what they're doing, right? Because it's right there, it's pretty much in the same city. Now, when I kind of mentioned this before, they try to say, well, they pick all the best students. Dude, it's not that much picking in the world, you know what I mean? Because you still have to have a basis for, um, um, a curriculum, and you still have to have a basis for the teaching, you know, I mean, you have to have a person that's able to teach the curriculum. So, I was wanting to know, how would, how does that sound to you? Would that, would you think that would even be possible? As far as like, if we having a problem with the test scores, collaborating, just getting information? I'm not saying, you know, you have to combine the schools, like, say, hey, uh, Sabine Pass, what are y'all doing over there to kind of keep y'all test scores up? We trying to, you know, figure some things out and over Port Arthur? How would that sound to you, or, you know, what do you think about that?
Again, I would say if it was, uh, um, and I'm, I'm just gonna change the scenario here, well, same scenario, just gonna change the, the setting. Uh, if this is, let's say that we are in a, a different ISD with different resources. I, I'm for one, the type of leadership that I, the type of leadership that I uphold, the type of leadership that I have, um, that I generate with is, if I need help, I'm gonna ask.
Right.
If I need help, I need to know. If I see a, a good partnership that is gonna help take my, help get me where I need to go, then I'm gonna partner with that person. I would say, um, and like I said, speaking from a broad perspective, um, and not speaking on anything in, in the city, if, if I.
Or you can just give your opinion on the city, because your opinion is not really nothing binding, that's your opinion, you know, you know what I mean?
My op- my opinion is, I would find, I would find something just like what I'm going through. I would find something that has the same, pretty much scenario of what I have been through, and I will find, find and pick the best one, whoever handles the situation the best. Um, how can I put this into an example? I would say, and, and I'm just gonna use, let's see, let's see, let's see, let's see, I'll use a grocery store. Let's say that I have a grocery store, me and you have grocery stores, correct?
Right, I guess, I guess so. I guess so, I guess I do have a grocery store.
I'm just trying to, you know, because I'm, I'm using this to, you know, kind of, to, to get my point across. You have a grocery store, I have a grocery store. You have a grocery store in, in, um, let's say, your grocery store is in Port Arthur, my grocery store is in Houston. However, my grocery store, your grocery store is, is thriving, is boom, 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 my grocery store is thriving. Then all of a sudden, your grocery store has hit, your grocery store will hit like a low point. And then all of a sudden, my grocery store hits a low point, but there's another grocery store across the street who is, who is, you know, successful. But then all of a sudden, here comes yours, it's picking back up because you found a solution. I would go with the one, I would go with the grocery store who is in the same predicament as me, who found the way out, and I will partner with you versus the other grocery store that hasn't had any decline yet, that hasn't faced any of the same problems that we face, that has, you know, continues to be successful. So saying all that to say, I would find and partner with an entity who has had the same situation and problem that I've been in, but has, that, but has found a way out of it and has contin- you know, found a way to, to get back on the right tracks to succeed and to succeed. So that's what I would say I would do, basically saying, you know, to wrap it all up, I would find an entity or find something that has, has the same problems but has overcome it.
Right, right, okay.
And that, that, that is now thriving.
Okay, cool, cool, cool.
And, and I'm not saying that I'm not, I wouldn't be open to options, you know, if, if, if I was in the bad spot, I would be open to, you know, pretty much anything that can help me get to where I need to get when it comes down to being successful. As long as it's the proper way, the correct way, I'm not, you know, interfering with anything, I'm not doing anything illegal, then if it's the, you know.
Yeah, you think so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, if it's correct, if it's right, we're good, hey, that's, I'm down to hear it. I'm, I'm down to, you know, let's, let me hear your game, let me hear what you got, let me hear what you got, let's move forward.
Okay, and probably to be the last question, right? Uh, what do you, now, they, they, they have a board member that made some claims, right? That they feel that the, the reason for low test scores is that, uh, non-English speaking Hispanics, right? What is that? English, I think it's, they say English is a second language. Non-English speaking Hispanics are the reason that we have the test scores that are low, right? Now, I mean, what, what do you think that your opinion is, the, I'm not saying that you have to agree with it or not. I'm asking, what is your opinion on, why you think some of the test scores may be low?
Again, and again, you know, not, not speaking, um, from, from any other standpoint but mine, and not even affiliating this with any school district in particular. I feel as though, then goes back to what I said earlier, when you see a problem and you see something is, is, is declining, or you see something that's tremendously declined, that you need to meet with your team, or whatever who it is, you need to pinpoint the situation, not just throw out, not just throw out anything, but pinpoint the situation, and then find solutions to move forward from it.
Right, but, but, but particularly with this school district, what do you think, in your opinion, right? Now, I'm just asking for your opinion. Now, a- as a school board member, you're gonna have to be able to, to answer some questions that's with the school district, you know what I mean? Because that's what they have you for, this school district, and when they ask your opinion on it, that's just your opinion. You're not saying that this is right or this is wrong, but somebody wanna hear you take a stand on your position, because they hired you, they wanna hear what your opinion is, right? Because you saying that you're different, you coming in with a new style, somebody wants to hear your opinion on the school district. And as a leader, sometimes we have to stand up and say, hey, this is where I stand on this, this is my beliefs on this. So, you know, now, I understand, you know, it's a lot of times you wanna be politically correct on some of the things, but understand, you don't have to conflict with anybody, but you're gonna have to make a stand as a leader. Hey, this is what I believe is the problem, and once you can identify the problem or what you believe to be the problem is, then you can be able to, to kind of work towards a resolution. But if, you know, we don't wanna, you know, acknowledge the problem, or, you know, kind of give a loop or answers, yeah.
That's most definitely what I'm giving reference to, and, and I'm, I'm speaking the way I'm speaking, because, you know, like I said, there's certain guidelines that we as board members have to follow. Now, like I said, in, in my personal opinion, and, and this could be because I, you know, I haven't been on the school board prior to, so I don't know what information they're privy to, or any information that they receive, but.
Yeah, this is not about nobody, this is just you.
In my opinion, I don't believe that that would be the attributing factor to, you know, to the success or whatever is going on. To me, I would say that we would have some more evaluations to see exactly where the problem lies, for us to even pinpoint something rather than just saying something, or rather just attributing it to one thing, because nine times out of ten, when it's, uh, when you have a problem as big as that, it's not just coming from one, you know, from one place, or it's not just because of one thing, so.
Well, let me, let me go ahead and kind of interject this scenario to you, right? We know that the test scores are getting low. Um, you have previous administration said that, well, the parents don't wanna deal with the students, right? The parents are not in the student's life, there's a lot of poverty in it, so if the parents don't wanna get into it, we can't do nothing. So, it's a lot of the blaming that the school district blames on the parents, a lot of the parents blame on the school district of not teaching, go ahead.
I, I, I definitely don't believe that's true. I would never, 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 and, and see, that's, that's, that's what the problem, and that's another big problem as well. You know, we've, we have a, you know, this fault game going on.
Yeah, you're right.
Because you do this, oh, it's y'all fault, because y'all supposed to do this. No, 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 no. It's exactly like I explained earlier, it is a partnership, it is a partnership, and it takes both parties to, to, to be able to come to some agreement and hold true to those agreements, and actually put the work in from both parties for it to even succeed. As I said before, as I will forever say, and as I even continue to show, I am willing, I am willing, 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 willing to do my part, to, to teach you what you need to know, to give you information that you need to know, even if you don't ask for. But it takes, it takes a partnership, it really takes a partnership. And that's one of the reasons, you know, as well, that I did, you know, take the agreement, you know, to come on the podcast, because I want parents to know, and I want people to know that it is a partnership. We can no longer, we can't afford, we can't afford to play the, the blame game anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
It can't be, it, it can't be, oh, it's y'all fault, because y'all the ones that have the longest. It can't be, oh, it's y'all fault, because y'all the ones that supposed to be doing this and the third, because that's what's supposed to happen? No, it takes a partnership, and it's gonna take community, and, and that was one of the pillars that I ran on whenever I was running. Uh, reestablishing the community, reestablishing the village, it takes a community from all fronts, believe it or not. I'm telling you what I know, because I've seen it, now that I've been in it, it is a lot of moving parts.
Right, and, and, and also, in my opinion on doing that, this is my opinion, right? If, to, to do that, you're gonna have to make some decisions, you're gonna have to make some decisive decisions. Now, it's gonna be some times when the school district is at fault, the, the, you may not have enough certified teachers, and it's gonna have to be an admission to that, because in my opinion, right, some of the biggest problems that we have, we have a lot of cowards that's blaming this, the school, the, the, the testing on, uh, non-speaking Hispanics. We got all these Hispanics over here, they can't speak English, English is a second language, and that's why the school board, that's bull crap. That may happen to a small amount, but hell, they just, if, from what I'm understanding, they just, they can take the test in Spanish. You know, that's, so that don't really make no sense to me, you know, unless I'm just out of touch on that, but I think that's a weak answer. And then heck, all the doggone parents is not, don't have trouble kids like that, man, you know what I mean? So, you, 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 you have to, you have to make a, a type of stand on it. And, and like also when, also when David Banner came through, right? A lot of people really didn't, a, a, a lot of people didn't really wanna listen to what he was trying to speak on, and they wanted to take it as like a pat me on the shoulder thing, because I remember, uh, Barti was up there, was going to get, we've been doing this, we've been doing this, we've been doing a good job. The, the thing is not to have him to try to have an arguing match over there with him. You had him over there to try to get some information from him, being, uh, you know, dealing with different kids or whatnot, one of his things. You wanted to get in there and get his opinions on what's happening, like you have the school set up like as a, a jail cell, where, you know, people. Like you have the school set up like as a a jail cell, where, you know, people going in, getting scanned, patted down and all that stuff. So I remember that was one thing he said you wanna need to change. So we have this, this this attitude with with a lot of the people, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but I I can, I can most definitely assure you, I mean, and like I said, my stand, my standpoint will never change, because I I I stand in the place and I stand with the people because they did put me in office, and I stand in the capacity of saying, look here, I am willing to work, I am willing to form a partnership, I am willing to meet you where you are, and that's where I stand. I can't speak for anyone else, I can't, I can't speak for for nobody but myself. But that's exactly where I stand, I will meet you where you are. And I need you to meet me so I can meet you so that we can get this done together, because it's gonna take everybody, like I said, it's a lot of moving parts. And and, you know, just just going back, in my opinion, a lot of things can be done, a lot of things need to be done, but it's gonna take that partnership for us to even accomplish the smallest things that need to get done before we can handle the larger things. But once we form that partnership, we can tackle all of these, all of these problems moving forward, and we can actually start to to get to the larger issues, which, you know, which is gonna, is also gonna take some time. And it's not, it's not gonna happen overnight at all, not gonna happen overnight. But my standpoint will forever forever be the same. I'll stand with the people, I stand with those those who even though, I I even stand with those who don't wanna stand with me, but I will meet you where you are. I will meet you where you are. But in order, I need you to meet me. I need you to meet, that's all I, that's all I ask.
And and there's something you have to know about this political game with the with the city and the school district? If you are truly for the people, you're gonna make some amendments on those board members and councils, I'm I'm telling you that straight up. So just be prepared for that, if you really are for the people, you're gonna have to, you you're gonna have to be ready for a fight.
Well, and and just being hon-, and and I'm just, you know, just being frank and honest. I I I wasn't put on on any, and and, well, let me not, you know, use that. Whatever I do, whatever I do, especially if if someone allows me to do it, if someone, if someone saw so much in me to 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 put me in this position, to help me get there, I'm here to, I'm here to help. I'm here to do what you asked me to do, I'm here to do what I'm said, what I said I was gonna do. So whether I make friends, whether I make enemies at the end of the day, as long as I'm doing what you, what you, what I said I was gonna do, as long as you hold me accountable, I have, I, everything else doesn't matter.
Yeah, well, okay, we we hope so, we'll be watching, cause people say that all the time.
Nothing, and and I could.
And be the status quo.
Trust and believe, and 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 hopefully, hopefully, I won't be the last, and hopefully, I won't be the first to prove this to you. But I'm telling you, I am most definitely for the people, most definitely, and I stand with them. And those those who know me, and even those who get to know me, they understand that, and they they do get a chance to see that. But like I told, like I say, I stand with the people, and as long as I'm doing right by the people, then I'm doing right by myself, and I'm doing right, I'm doing right by what I was called to do.
Okay, man, hey, I appreciate it, brother, and I um, and I think this was a great interview. And see, it wasn't at home, it wasn't that, wasn't hurting that much, it wasn't as bad as everybody told you it was, brother. And um, and um, you can go ahead and have the last word.
All I, um, good, my phone is on, my phone is on six percent. Um, I just wanna say thank you, you know, first and foremost, you know, especially for reaching out, like I said.
Thank you.
When we have, when we have platforms such as these, we need to utilize it in any form or fashion, because we have a lot of information that needs to get out. And for those, anybody who has questions, I guarantee you, I do not mind. I do not mind answering them, because I personally feel as though there's nothing that we shouldn't, you know, talk about, unless unless I just legally can't, then I won't. But I want, I want people, I want the people to understand that you can put your trust in me. If nobody else that that you voted for or whatever you feel, I'm telling you, I have a proven track record of it, which is why I was able to do as much as I did in high school, which is why I'm able to do as much as I do in college in any capacity that I serve. I promise you, I told you from the get-go that I'm here for you, I stand with you, I'm here advocating on behalf of you. And if I lose friends, oh, well, as long as I am doing what is right, which is what I was taught, having integrity, doing what is right when no one is looking, as long as I am doing what is right, then I will sleep very peaceful at night knowing that we are moving in the right direction. And so all I'm asking is that you keep me in your prayers, continue to support, not just myself, but others that you see are working with true intentions, and also utilize your right to vote. Make sure that you truly understand and that you truly believe that who you are voting for is gonna make the right decisions for you day in, day out. Not just sometimes, or not just when it comes down to they have to, but but doing what is right, no one is looking, not even when, not even when it's the media is around. So that's all I have to say, um, just please keep me lifted in your prayers, please keep me um lifted. With every single thing that you see me do, continue to support it, if it's a Facebook post, please share it, because everything I do, I do from a good place, I do because I want to publicize the good that we have going on in our community. And by all means, if you have any questions or concerns, you can reach me, my email address is taylor.getwood@paiss.org, T A Y L O R dot G E T W O O D at P A I S D dot org. Um, you can, you're you're free to email me anytime, today or the night, I will be open and honest. I do have a lot um right now going on, you know, with starting school and everything, but I will most definitely respond back to your emails and get to you as soon as I can. So with that being said, thank you, um, Mr. Davis, for having me on again. Thank you all, um, for those of you who are gonna tune in and listen to this. And again, I'll speak, I have this whole entire time, I've spoken on behalf of Taylor Getwood, not anyone else. And any situation I have spoken on does not deal anything with any any district affairs or nothing. So with that being said, thank you all um so much for all that you've done, please continue to keep up a good job. And I promise you all, I will continue to do the best that I can with what I have to make sure that we are being successful.
And on that note, I appreciate everybody for listening to the P A Political Revolution Podcast. Peace.